Well, he has been here and he's been gone and he's been here and he's been gone. And we believe now Wednesday he's gonna be back. He's got his pipe strung out along the road. You can see out there. What he'll end up doing is setting his, well, the long one anyway, with the crick. He'll set his boring machine on the west side of the crick. He'll dig a pilot hole all the way under the crick and back to the east. And then he'll hook onto that pipe and he'll pull that back and bore out as he goes along. And that pipe then will just snake back down through the hole. Pull it right through. And he's got another place, the paved road out here, he has to go under there too. There's another boring contractor that goes north and south across the state highway. He was here and he opened it up, but King should have been here to open it up. And he left because he didn't have the equipment and King had promised him he was gonna be here to do it. So he'll be back. He'll be back, but...
What he made him open it up? I see where it goes.
Well, he was trying to find the pipe and then he was gonna go ahead and do the boring.
Oh, okay. Okay. But he got into more than he thought. It was sandy and he needed more shoring and stuff like that. So rather than, I mean, he couldn't get King to come up here, so he was pulled out. But he'll be back.
Can I ask you, did they come up with anything on, are they gonna be able to stay where we originally talked on that side out here by Esther Avenue?
You mean on the highway?
That was Eric Friday before I left.
I think they're gonna inch it back closer to the back shore.
And it was okay with the DOT?
Yes, it was okay with the DOT.
Good, good, good. So I didn't think anything how it turned out.
Can't remember that guy's name, Don Dennis and...
Yeah, Wayne Breslin.
That's it, yeah, yeah. So he's been very cooperative.
Yeah, that's very good.
That'll be no problem.
I think if you stay on this toes slope or whatever, they're usually okay. They just don't wanna, they wanna be able to clean their ditch out though.
Well, we've got fiber optics and other things in that ditch, so we have to work around. And you never know that, you know they're there, but you never know exactly where they're there and still you open it up. Another thing on the King job is, he's got these controls that have to go with the pump station, which are probably a couple, two or three months out yet. I mean, they're still in manufacture. So he's not necessarily behind getting it done in the end, 'cause that still could be a weak link, getting the electrical control.
Starting everything at one time would be, he might as well be doing it weekend.
That's right, yeah. So I believe everything is going well. The dirt is looking just great out there. We have some sand pockets up on top of the hill and we have a bid item to overexcavate those and then fill them back in with good material. Just, I don't foresee any... Oh, yeah. And every one of those machines has air conditioning, I understand, so...
So you need it.
So they can just keep going.
Oh, it sure looks, they're doing a nice job.
The only pile of rock out there in the...
Yeah, he's moving that over there and you're paying for some of that rock that's stored there, 'cause he has to pay for it, so there's stored materials on your pay request. What is the amount of the pay request?
It's 204.
Being in the bill.
It's in your bills, yeah. So the only other things that I'm thinking about is, you know, we brought up a month or two ago, your rates. You know, you gotta be thinking about that.
We have the third reading.
Oh, you already are going on the third reading?
Yeah.
We made a decision.
You guys are way ahead of everybody.
We're taking care of that.
Good, good. Earl is down here, I don't know if you see him every time he's down here, but he's... If he isn't here every day, he's here every other day. He makes a circuit of jobs that he's working on early here in Alta. So he's keeping...
Makes a circle, huh?
Yep. So I encourage you to go out there and prop around on it, see what it's looking like.
I've been out there two, three times. Pretty impressed with their work.
That's really all I have.
Any questions? Thank you, Neil.
All right.
Thank you, Tommy.
You betcha, sir.
Now, I'm talking about you.
All right. My ears will ring.
The next item is city attorney. Joe called me and said that he had a Rensie meeting, but lease agreement is for your review.
Everybody should have a copy.
And if there's any questions, why, far away, and if it looks okay to you, why, we'll proceed.
Is there really anything in there that...
That last page is the, the rest of it's routine lease agreement. But he wanted to find out about those acres, if he did that right.
And specifically, we'll, he'll get the farm for 10 acres, but if there's more than that ending result...
They would have to pay, is that, is that the way it was?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, he wanted the council to see it first. He's not giving it to Johnsons yet. Then it'll go to them and this is not final, you know? If they're okay with it, then it is final, but if they're not, then it'll be more discussion, he said. So it's just for review at this time.
But there actually isn't any terminology in regard to the extra land if there's more than 10 acres.
Wasn't that addressed on the final page there?
For example, if the tennis farm 20 acres, 2012, cash ran us $35,000.
Yeah, I read that.
The tennis farm 12 acres in 2012, cash ran $700, so apparently $350 an acre over 10 acres.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I hadn't gotten that far yet. I read slow.
The next step would be, if this clears, if this is okay with the council, to approve this farm lease, then the next step would be, Joe will take it to the Johnsons. So if anybody has any further questions or if you would wanna...
Since this is actually the first time I've seen this document, I guess I'd go with somebody that hasn't experienced it. And Jim, what do you think?
Yeah, I don't have any depth since everything seems to be pretty much black and white.
You okay?
Yeah.
Todd?
You?
I'll make the motion that we accept the farm lease agreement.
It was drawn. Is there a second?
Secondary.
The motion's been made by one to accept the farm lease drawn by a city attorney, seconded by Hope Flin. Before I call for votes, is there any further question? If not, all in favor signify the same. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I have a letter from the city attorney concerning Carl Hemmer. It's from our carriers, one of the officers of our carrier insurance company. And it reads, "Dear City Council, I have the email that Kurt Schwalsted sent to the city of Odepo. This is written by our city attorney. I believe the analysis to be pretty clear. The insurance carrier representative wants Dr. Martin's signature. I believe that we must comply or we may risk a denial of coverage." So, now, I did talk to Joe and he told me why he couldn't come tonight and that's very acceptable to me. He's working on the Rensie Foundation. He saw Carl and told him.
We talked to him originally when we got the original release.
Well, I thought you did. I thought you did.
But we haven't talked to him since about getting the release from him.
Well, Joe told him that he'll, he needs to see and that's it.
Is he not getting treatments now?
We don't know. I mean, you know, really... Anyway.
So he's aware of it?
He's aware of it. He's aware of it. Now, just so there's no misunderstanding, I can send him, have Joan send him a copy of this.
Probably wouldn't want to.
Now, how deep is this? I mean, if he's still coming to fire new meetings, is that okay?
Well, I can't answer that.
Yeah, what I, who's gonna answer? I mean, how do I know? I mean, what do I do?
I really don't think you can do anything.
I can't see.
If he fails to get Dr. Martin's release, he is not a fireman. He'll be on, he'll be put on reserve.
So right now...
Inactive status, I should say.
Being in the action.
So right now, he can't even go to a fire, correct?
Nope. The way I interpret it.
Yeah, my interpretation would be the same and I think city attorneys is the same.
Well, it said he hadn't seen that Dr. Martin since early on, right after his injury.
That's what they want.
He hadn't seen Shelley.
Shelley.
He hadn't seen Shelley.
Because Shelley's the one who signed, who signed the release for him.
And that's who they want to sign the release, so that's who he's got to go see and get that release.
Well, as Joe says, "I believe that we must comply or we may risk a denial of coverage."
That's the letter that needs to go to court right there.
Right.
This just came. The mayor just opened it tonight. It just came.
All right, this goes to Carl.
The mayor, excuse me, the lawyer did talk to Carl.
He said he happened to see him on the street or something.
Yes, yes. We, if, I'll move on if there's no further question. We have citizens to be heard and Gary, you are here.
I just, I wanted to give an update on the park. It's all done except for the dead stuff to be cut out of the trees by Odepo Tree Treating Service. So then the grant will be finished.
Say that again, Gary.
Everything's done up to the city park for the grant for the...
Oh, for the...
Sec, yeah, yeah. Except for Squimp to trim the dead stuff out of the trees.
Okay.
And he don't, I don't know what he's waiting for for sure.
We still have some time to complete the paperwork. The sooner we can get that paperwork...
Has he done his scum yet?
Anything else?
And then there's a REAP grant available and we want to apply for the REAP grant. We want to, we're talking about this and there's no, it's not a matching fund grant, we're just applying for it. We want to apply for putting a sidewalk out of the gazebo down by the car wash over to Third and, what is that, Locust? Okay, around the berm up to, so they can come out of the gazebo and go to that sidewalk.
Had you applied for one of these in the past?
Yeah, the only word, unite.
Did we get close on that?
We got close. Okay, and then we were gonna, there's some cracks and stuff in the pillars at the park. We were gonna, this is all gonna be on that grant. Get those caulked and get those repainted, that's part of the grant. We would like to pour a pad up to the park for, and then put a concrete picnic table up there, straight out of the shelter house by that grill that sits there by itself. And then I had Greg add 10 feet to the concrete on the shelter house. We were gonna put on there to extend the roof out of the shelter house, cover the concrete, but not close it in. It'd just be, you know, open the door and it'd be shade.
Great deal. Good deal.
Okay, that's, and then benches and pads to set the benches on. And I guess what I need is your permission to apply for this, so that if we, if we get the grant, we can do it, you know?
Is there anything, is there anything more like on the landscaping end of it or...
There is, but it's gotta be up until the 15th or the 9th actually now.
No, I would honestly, I would really, really like to do something around that new playground equipment.
If we can come up with a bid by the 9th, yeah, we can apply for whatever.
Okay, that would be really great.
And Deb's doing it. Deb and Linda.
We'll really finish it off.
Deb and Linda are doing the grant and they need, they need to have the grant in Sack by the 9th of August. So if you got a bid of what you wanna do, get hold of Deb or Linda.
I'm not sure what I wanna do, 'cause I'm not sure what would be good to put there, you know, as far as the kids...
I've looked, I've looked at a lot of, looked at a lot of parks. They've got anything from four by fours around them to railroad ties around them to blocks to...
Yeah, I know, and I don't know, you know, you're just so afraid of, you know, if you got something hard there, somebody's gonna fall and crack their noggin on it and...
The whole trouble with like these grants is, they don't come out every year, so by the time we find out about them, we have to do...
You're under the gun.
You're under the gun. Greg's giving us a bid on extending the shelter house and the rest of the stuff. Yeah, if you can come up with an idea... Restrain's done. Have you seen that? That's a nice... It oughta be for that kinda money. You flush that, you don't want to hit your hand there, it's gonna take her down with it.
I'll make a motion that the city supports OBC applying for the REAP grant.
Keith, it's in the form of a resolution 11.26. If you, yeah, if you would make the motion to approve that.
I'm making a motion to approve that.
Is there a second? You've all heard the motion to approve resolution 11.26, which would be approving the REAP application. And it was seconded by Scott. This will be a roll call. Bo, Flink?
Yes.
Hope Flin?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
The motion unanimously.
Yeah, this is kinda a long shot, so, you know.
Well, go for it.
You guys are doing a fine job.
Yeah, we're very pleased you're doing these things for us, the community. Thank you, Gary.
That's it.
Well, thank you, Gary. Thank you very much. Oh, let me see, I gotta go back to citizens to be heard. We have a lady that, do you have something you wanna...
Yeah, it's the pool. The pool up there is...
Oh, the pool concerns?
It's a big concern.
Okay, all right.
You got kids up there that, you got lifeguards that are sitting, and I've been up there to watch this and they got their legs up like this while they're watching the kids or they're looking up like this. Last night, my, my son's been going there since the beginning of the pools opened. He has not had a problem since he's been there. It's escalating. A week and a half, is it Tyler that runs the place? I talked to him last night. I was fuming mad. I mean, I could've ripped somebody's head off last night. I was so mad. My son was jumped on last night, okay? He's got scars from it. The kid that did it, which was Sutton, denied that he even did anything to Easton. Come to find out, one of the kids said, also said he was gonna run him over by a car. I found this out today, okay? Easton was scared to death to leave that swimming pool. They've been ganging up on him. The lifeguards do not stay on their benches. I've watched them in the room. The other day, when I was up there, there were three lifeguards inside that center room while them kids were... I'm the only parent. On my way out to go get my son, because my son was scared to death to leave last night, my neighbors, Neil Sebenoller, come up to me and said, Tracy, Darcy's been up there and they've watched how they treat Easton. And not only Easton, there's other kids. We're talking little kids. It's gotta stop, because if it doesn't stop, somebody's seriously gonna get hurt or they're gonna drown. And you guys are gonna have a problem on your hands.
Is anybody aware of this?
I am watching. I'll park my car down two blocks and I'll go up to that place and I'll watch. There's no supervision, real supervision. Sometimes there is, but not a lot. Them kids are doing whatever they want and if they pick on whoever they want, as long as they're in their little clique, that's what it is. My son's not from here. He's moving here. We, I just moved here a year ago. My daughter works at the downtown cafe. I am not dealing with this no more. You guys are gonna have a serious problem on your hands. I'm not the only parent that's seeing this now. And I was just, brought this up last night, they seen my son being picked on. There's no reason for this, none. It's not just because he's being picked on, you got little kids in there that are being unsupervised.
I could assure you, we will look into this.
Them bigger kids also do not belong in that baby pool, period.
Well, we'll make that policy. That's not your policy to make.
I'm just saying, they don't belong in there, because you got bigger kids throwing things around. You got little kids that can't even play in their own pool. You know, I don't know, I don't know what more to say, but I'll tell you what, that was hot.
What your complaint is, is that your boy is being picked on?
Bullied in the place, is not being supervised right.
Okay, and what's his name?
Easton Conlin.
How old is Easton?
14. My son's on the first stages of autism. He has no problem up there. I asked Tyler. I said, "You have a problem with my son?" He said, "No." He said, "The only thing is," and I'm gonna explain something to you, "Easton wants someone to hear him." But when you're, when you're being shut out, this is, he went through this in Anthem. He's been shoved in a locker for three hours and nobody's ever known what was going on. The police department got involved in this and found out who the kids were. They admitted to doing it, okay? This bullying's gotta stop. I will not tolerate it no more. I don't like it. My own kids don't like it. My older kids, they won't put up with it.
Are they being bullied by other kids at the pool or lifeguards or...
Last night, when Joe and I, Joe Andrews and my husband, we both got up to the, we got up to the area. There was five or six boys sitting outside waiting for Easton to come out. Did not know that we were the parents. They're gonna kick him in the balls and that kid there was gonna hit him with his car. And I had to actually find out today, you know, if this is really what was gonna happen, but they were actually gonna beat the hell out of Easton last night.
Do you know who these boys were?
I don't know half these kids in this town, because they ain't been here that long. But I know that Sutton kid and I'll tell you what.
Is that who?
Sutton. I never had a problem with that kid, but last night.
I see.
I have no respect for that kid whatsoever. I'm sorry. He does what he wants.
Did you call for law enforcement?
Huh?
Did you call for law?
They called. They, she said she called the cops last night.
Who, she?
The little blonde girl that was the...
Lifeguard?
Yeah, she said she called the cops last night. She did not, she called Tyler. And then Tyler talked to me last night on the phone and he said, "I've never had a problem with Easton." He said, "The only time I did, that, he just, he was trying to tell me something and he got a little irate." Well, he's trying to tell him that these kids are being mean to him. Well, he said, "I've never had a problem with him, ever." You know, it's just gonna stop.
Do you know any of the other boys besides the...
Some of them, just by looks. That's all I know, some of them. I'm, like I'm telling you, I don't know who half some of these kids are.
Is this primarily in the evening?
Mm-hmm. He can go there during the day sometimes. He says he likes going during the day, 'cause there's more little kids and nobody bothers him.
That's true.
And that's pretty sad.
That is.
And he should be able to go to that pool without having any problems. Oh, and the other thing they said was, that I need to bring Easton to the pool and sit with him all the time. Well, if that's the case, then so should everyone.
Who told you that?
Tyler.
Huh?
Why? Why?
Oh, that's...
To sit with Easton. If I have to sit with my son, then every parent better be there with their kid.
No, that is...
We have, we have a limit set on the age that, that they're not allowed to be left there alone.
They want me to watch them, because they said that they can't be there to look at everything, all the problems, all the time. Well, you know what? Maybe they better start focusing on what's going on. That's what you got hired, that's what that job is for. You gotta see if somebody's drowning, you gotta see if there's any problems, because that problem can escalate. You're talking about water here and all it takes is one second. And if there's a fight, one little kid or somebody's involved in it, someone's gonna get hurt. I wasn't gonna come here, but I, I've talked to a few parents.
We're glad you did, because it takes, it takes a lot of courage to come in and say things.
I'm frustrated.
Yeah, you're frustrated. I would urge you, if it's, if it's that imminent of a peril, to please call law enforcement on your own and tell them that there's a problem.
I'm almost tempted to file charges against that Sutton kid. Easton's got scars from jumping on him. He literally jumped on Easton.
When did that incident happen?
Last night.
Okay, I would, I would make that call tonight and have someone come down and see you tonight and open a investigation on it.
I figured his dad would come and talk to us, because I never had a problem with this kid, never, ever. But I watch how he kinda speeds around town, you know, and does he, that kid does what he wants, I'm sorry. And then all, tonight just really flipped me and then when he told me to go blank myself, that's...
Would, would you just, just...
Yeah, I don't know.
Call our, call the sheriff's office and ask that you would like to talk to a deputy about a situation that you have pending and you wanna know what your options are.
Good, they kicked him out last night.
And they will send, they will send someone down to visit with you.
They kicked who out, Ronnie?
Mm-hmm, they kicked him out last night.
We can document, they can document those things and maybe there's something that can be done.
I, I need something.
Is there, is there anybody that witnessed Ronnie jumping on your son or...
They were all there, but see, the other kids, they were all standing around that little Ronnie and his little car. You know, they were all standing around there and he said, you know, Joe and I were standing there and they didn't even know Easton, like I said, was my kid. You could hear, you know, the little things, the little snide remarks. They were waiting for him to come out. Easton was not leaving that pool.
Okay.
He sat there. He was not leaving till I come to him.
You know, I'm not promising you that there's, you know, but...
I, I don't care, as long as I can file a report to him, because if it happens again...
Yes, please file it, because that needs to be...
Yeah, 'cause Joe was upset. I've never seen Joe upset.
You can call in, it doesn't cost you a dime, 668-2221.
2221?
You'll get the dispatcher and you tell them that you're, who you are and that you would like to talk to a deputy about an incident that occurred last night at the Odepo Swimming Pool.
Okay.
And they will send an officer down to see you.
Right.
For your information, Keith, is it, if you don't know, he's...
I know who Keith is.
Yeah, we know each other. He's a nice people.
Yeah, I know.
Tracy, when you talked to me earlier, you also mentioned something about breaks.
Oh, yeah, the breaks. My understanding is, and maybe I don't know, when, when they're there at the pool, they're all taking their breaks. Some of them are going out two at a time during pool. And I've seen them outside the pool, leaving one lifeguard inside, okay?
When they're supposed to all three be on duty?
Uh-huh.
Get a 10-minute break.
No, they've been outside. I've seen them outside.
You're saying outside the family?
Outside the pool.
During the non-break time?
During the non-break time, when there's people swimming.
Okay.
I don't know, I just, there's a lot of laziness. I see it and Tyler, and I know he's not there all the time, but you know what? These kids are lazy. Some of these kids are really lazy. And I see it. It's like it's, it's just a thing, you know, it's an everyday thing. I can go sit up there and do whatever I want, you know? This is a serious situation. Here's a pool.
It is a serious situation and our pool's a huge liability to the city.
Big liability. All it takes is one second.
You're absolutely right. The trouble we have is, I mean, the kids that apply at the pool is what we get for applicants, basically. I mean, and I'm, I'm not saying that's right and that justifies anything that happens, because it doesn't, absolutely.
This might be a thought, because my kids went to Mapleton before this. We had the same problem in Mapleton. And I don't know how it is for you guys, but they got a parent in the morning time, one parent, and they paid for their swimming for the whole year. And they got a parent at night, an adult, and they came and they sat there with them. And their kids got to swim, you know, all the time, but that parent was there all the time. Somebody there, an adult there all the time. And it changed, it turned around.
Just kinda supervising.
Mm-hmm. You need that. I don't know, Darcy said that she don't even wanna go no more. That these people don't even wanna go there no more, because, you know, they're, they're putting their kids in their hands. I mean, they're, they're there too, but what if their kid runs around the, you know? But there's a lot of bullying, as she said.
Okay. As far as the not wanting to go and stuff, you know, I, I was up there just the other day and this little boy was trying to pass his D-ANT test and he got in trouble. Both of those lifeguards were in that water immediately. I mean...
There's days that they watch and then there's days that there is no supervision.
Both of them were in and I was impressed, I gotta say.
Was it with the little blonde girl that was there? Was she a blonde girl?
No, it was, it was Courtney Schnuckel and Jessica Newman.
Courtney, is she a dark-haired girl? Yep, there's a dark-haired girl that always seems to be sitting in her chair all the time, but it's mainly your boys. It's mainly your boys. It's not the girls, it's mainly your boys.
Okay.
All right, I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
2221?
Yes.
Thank you for coming. Todd, why don't we maybe get into this when we get into our chairman's reports, unless you wanna talk about it right now?
Well, if it's a fresh one here, I, maybe we should just get it done.
Well, I don't know what there is really to talk about. I guess, you know, it's just a situation that we're gonna have to address and get to the bottom of it and, yeah, possibly have a, another employee meeting and...
I'd come to you with...
How, how old are these boys? What's on, 13, 14, 15?
Old enough to drive.
You know, 116.
Well, Ronnie Sutton is 16.
Yeah, at least.
Old enough to know better, you know?
You know?
Well, that's...
If you decide to have that meeting, just let me know.
Uh, you know, I don't think too many of us here really know about the situation, and...
Tonight's the first I've heard of it.
Obviously, you don't either, but you'll look into it, let's leave it that way.
Yep, absolutely.
If you, if you got a minute sometime, you wanna stop up and talk to Joyce, because she took the grandkids there for a week.
Okay.
She probably has some concerns too.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on. Uh, the sewer rates, this is the third and final reading, the ordinance of one point one one.
I forgot to grab a copy, but it's the one we talked about for three different months.
We've approved it.
It's the new rates.
The new rates, yeah.
This is just by law, we're addressing the ordinance.
It's the third and final reading, we all know what's in the ordinance, and that it does raise the rates. So I'll make a motion that we accept the third and final reading and pass the ordinance, or? Motion that we...
We deserve to accept the ordinance. Uh, you've all heard the motion. Uh, my Counselman Flank, and you, we have a second Counselman, Bankford. Uh, if there's not any further question? Uh, does this have to be a roll call? Yeah, um, this'll be, um, roll call vote, Flank?
Yes.
Hopeflink?
Yeah.
Bankford?
Yes.
Shot. Motion is unanimous, passed. The third and final reading, the ordinance of one oh one, must be completed and passed.
I brought that in tonight.
We have an owner occupied housing grant. Are all of you familiar that we have received approval on this? Everybody knows what's going on. We're kind of in a, now, Joan might have something to say there. Right now, we're in a kind of a wait and see. Uh, uh, you are to, uh...
I think I gave, everybody should have a copy of that request.
Yeah, if you find that one copy, um...
That was from Region Twelve?
Yeah, Rick Hunziger is clear up on the top.
Yep.
Okay, what we have to do is, you have to be familiar with this.
He said it's a form that they've used in other ones, and so it must be pretty generic. The way I understand it, there's like a general contractor that will oversee these housing units at, once they're approved. And they have to put a bid in the paper to get proposals from engineers, and they have a list of people that will also do this. But we can also make this available to any contractor that we think might be interested. And then they have to have these bids in, or these proposals in, by the September meeting, because he wants us to approve the vendor at the September meeting.
So what do you do, advertise it?
Yes, there will be advertising. They do it, Region Twelve does it.
They put it in the paper?
They do it, yes.
So really...
So we gotta just tell them, "Go ahead"?
Yeah, if, if you don't see anything, the only thing I see is the date. I don't think you probably wanna meet on Labor Day, but maybe you do, I don't know.
Oh, you meet the Tuesday after, and that's gonna propose.
Okay, okay, and then that's, that's the only change I could see.
Okay, well, you need a motion?
Yes.
A motion that we proceed with the O'Donnell, RFP, protect services, uh, situation.
You've all heard the motion to proceed on the housing rehabilitation program. A motion's been made by Flank, seconded by Hopeflink. Is there any question required, call for a vote? Any questions?
This is just a regular, yeah.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, opposed, motion carried.
Well, they'd be varying degrees of renovation then, wouldn't they?
Yeah, it'll all depend on what, see now, there'll be a whole new round of applications, and it'll depend on what that house needs, the applications are scored by points, Region Twelve has all of that. And so some houses may only take ten thousand, another might be up to twenty-five thousand, and whatever money's left, they'll go beyond the eight housing unit.
That'd be kinda hard for a contractor to give a bid.
Yeah, I don't understand what...
That, that sounds difficult to me too.
But they have to follow those guidelines that are laid out, and I suppose Region Twelve has their...
I, I think they have their format, and it'll probably become, uh, more clear once they, uh, put that in the video.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, building permits, have they been reviewed? Were there any questions on any of the permits?
Bill, any other call, can you?
What's it, yes, what I've seen.
The motion's been made to approve the building permit by Flank, seconded by Hopeflink, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Is the motion to approve Sparky's Class C beer on Sunday sales? The, the motion's been made to approve Sparky's Class C beer on Sunday sales by Hopeflink, seconded by Bankford, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. The September meeting date falls on Labor Day, on a Monday, uh, it would be traditional to do it the next night, unless there's a problem.
I don't see a problem, I'd say we have it on Tuesday night, after later.
Six? Mm-hmm, okay.
We don't need that motion.
No.
We'll just meet on Tuesday to the regular time?
Okay.
Uh, the complaint filed, no, Keith, you didn't see anything?
There was that one letter on that fire thing, where's?
The fire pit.
It's not in the correspondence.
Was it up on the...
Up on the counter?
Oh, yeah.
Not the fire pit.
Bill, is Bill back, he can explain it.
What did they use it on?
That fire.
Yeah, they used it.
Fire pit complaint that was on a property line.
Oh, oh.
Oh!
You remember?
Bill's aware of it.
There, there's one line on your desk.
Oh, is it out there yet? Okay.
You gonna get it?
Yeah.
I bet, I bet I'll...
How do we know?
Are you privy to this fire pit?
I'm just getting Phil's...
I'm gonna read this to you, Counsel. I have concerns the neighbor to the Salvo's across property line, I do not feel it's our expense to pay eight hundred dollars to survey. It's close to, or, they think, she, she thinks it might be across her property line. The small building is right on or close to our line. Also, the landscape of fire pit, I am pretty sure is over, which she means over the line. They moved it after they moved in, so there can be a larger fire. They have a backyard they can put it on. Your building permit, I, I can't read it.
I think she made right, because she had just picked up a building permit for the trees, so she's quoting that, that our building permit applica- application says it's supposed to be five feet off the lot line.
Oh, here we go, yeah, so, closer than five feet of line. I know they're pushing that for sure. I have had to permit for my landscaping, why did they not have to for the fire pit? You don't want me to give you a little input on it?
They didn't, yeah, you don't have to.
According to the lady that just left, that, they owned that property, Tracy.
Mm-hmm.
And I took her up there to look at it to try to figure out where the lot line was, and she said that may, that they put the pit there, and there was never any concern about it, but the lady that's sitting there now never did it, but she did it. And she said that it could be six to eight inches across the line, but she doesn't know for sure where the line is either, and that's why I say, you know, that's kind of a deal, we don't know where the line is.
We don't know where to tell them to put it.
First of all, it's a property dispute.
We don't, should have nothing to do with that.
That's correct, you're correct.
And, and they've got, you know, I don't know, um, if they got a lot of property in the back of their yard to move it back, but, you know, if, if, if that is the lot line on that house, or that shed, they are infringing a little bit, and they're certainly not five feet off of it. So, but neither would that shed be then.
Is the shed unskids?
You know, I didn't look at it that close.
That's, I doubt it.
We got another issue on the other end of town we talked about here last week.
No, this one, yeah. Do we all concur, she needs to be advised that the city did not intend to property light.
Right.
So would you?
Go later.
Yeah.
If they find out for sure where the lot line is, then the city can say, "Hey, you gotta be five feet off it," that's all you can do.
They can determine the exact position of the property line, then the city can...
And it's just blocks sitting on top of the ground.
Right, that's all I seen, was something changed since I looked at it.
I'm gonna move on to the future plans of the Rector property. That property is down on the Moyawak Park. It, the house has been vacated, I've built, I think we've had all the line disconnected, electric, oil, gas.
Have you?
I don't know, didn't we have an order?
I don't think there's anything off of there.
Didn't we have an order again for that?
Yeah, but see, I kinda wonder if that hasn't changed, because Mid-America don't do their own anymore locating, and whether that woman, they, they hired somebody to come in and do locates now. Uh, consolidated, I don't know if guessing, Carce is consolidated locating or something. Whether they get a hold of IPS and say, "Hey, this house is coming down, you need to get the gas and electric off." I need to talk to somebody like Brian or, and find out.
Will you do that, Bill?
Has not been done until Friday, I will.
Very good.
Okay, excuse me, the reason it's on the agenda is because we have to tell the assessor what your plans are, if you have no intentions of ever selling it, if you're just gonna keep it a green space, then it'll go off the tax roll.
It's gonna be a green space.
Okay, that's what needs to be in the minutes, so he can figure it off the tax roll.
You need a motion to make that motion.
Second, you heard the motion that, uh, the property will become green space by Scott, seconded by Flank, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, thank you.
Is that gonna, is that gonna prevent us from ever selling it in the future?
No, he said if you ever change your mind, and there is some, a chance to do it, then it can go back on the tax roll. But this will take the, take it off the tax roll immediately.
We'll move on to nuisance abatement committee report. Anybody?
Other than, uh, on the sixteenth, that's the court date that's set for the Rick Reed property and the Griffin property. And, uh, I'll be doing that probably on my own time, because I'll be retired by then.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I ask, uh, just ask that if I drive my own vehicle, is it okay if I turn in mileage for that trip?
Do that.
All right.
We, we wanna follow through on those too.
Yes, yes, and I will take some photos and take a little time, take some photos as we get close to that date, I've asked him.
That, that's what we need to present to the...
Anybody, anybody go take a look at it, if you see something, please write it down, so I don't miss anything.
Things are disappearing in the weeds.
A lot of, a lot of writing down.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know.
That's what we're talking about, Griffin.
Yeah.
Oh.
Both, both properties.
I've never seen such a mess up there. I, I mean, it's bad, bad, bad.
I mean, I start something, and then it don't finish, and you can't, you can't even see that deck.
We have people come to town and comment on what in the hell is going on up there. So, the sixteenth, can you follow through on that, please? Anything else, Counsel?
Excuse me a minute.
Go ahead, Jim.
Court date is the sixteenth?
Anything else? All right, the library report, I have read, it's in order, and I would entertain a motion to approve the library.
Oh, we'll accept that.
Who got the first, Jim?
I missed the second.
I think Todd got it, so he got the second.
I was gonna say the second. Todd.
Todd, uh, I'm, 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 I'm made for made the motion to approve the library report, seconded by Scott, is that correct? At all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Um, Joan, you wanna take care of this?
We already did that. Yeah, I threw it in with, uh, the letter, it's already done.
Okay. Well, I thought it was, but it's not maybe.
Yeah, that's the, that's the RF.
The, uh, county law enforcement report is here, if anybody might look at it, it's right here. The city employee health insurance quotes, uh, Joan, do you wanna cover that with the counsel?
Everybody has their copy. If, if we renew what we have right now, it's like a thirty-three percent, um,
Reduction.
Decrease, reduction. And he also said maybe you'd wanna go back to what you had in two thousand nine, and that's on the second sheet. That would be an eighteen percent reduction. So, as you can see, the premiums are definitely better. I think maybe the, right now, we have a two thousand dollar deductible, and the employee was, um, liable for a thousand, and the city was gonna kick in a thousand, that helped keep the rates down. I don't know if you wanna keep it that way, you wanna...
If we renew it, we're gonna get thirty-three percent whacked off of the premium. What we have now, would you?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's black on white right now, but if we have a claim...
Then that would take effect a year from now.
Yeah.
This, this, this rate on here is good for a year.
Now, what I'm saying is if, if we have a claim, say, Bill would get hurt, and you gotta pay that two thousand dollar deductible, you're backing down off your thirty-three percent again.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's what we've had.
Right. That's right.
So, what, what do you, what are you?
I'm, I'm just saying, what's, what's the difference between, what's the, the...
Yeah, what are the added benefits to the other, to go into the same thing?
Over two thousand nine.
Um, it was, the rates are higher, but I think the out-of-pocket for the employee is more. Compare the out-of-pocket, it's, oh, let's see. If it, if there were a serious... Yeah, four and twelve, and down here, it's...
Four and eight.
Four and eight, yeah. And you also had a, a liner in there that if there was dire need, the council would reconsider the out-of-pocket, maybe helping with some of the out-of-pocket expense, the deductible. And that was in the resolution last year. They would be considered on a one-on-one basis.
Joan, you're one of the employees, and Bill, do you see any problem?
As long as we stay healthy, now. The renewal is naturally the best one.
Do you see any problem in just, in renewing, uh, keeping what we have? Are you satisfied?
It'll be a lot cheaper.
What, thirty-three percent?
The monthly premiums.
Yeah, for the city, it would be quite a discount.
What are we doing with the deductible, they pay a part of the zip rate?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I don't see why there's that much difference in the premium really. It was eighteen percent discount and a...
No, the deductible is...
It's over a thousand bucks.
Yeah, I guess so.
Mm-hmm. That's twelve thousand bucks.
Yeah. Well, eight, yeah.
I don't see if it's working, but stick with this one, I don't know.
Renew, renew? I guess I'd be inclined to understand the hanging. The motion would take the renewal of the current policy. Three forty-five, single coverage, seven seventy-seven, and the coverage look the same. The stipulations we made in previous years in helping out what could be done.
One of the reasons he said it was a big, a bigger reduction was because... One of the reasons he said it was a big, a bigger reduction was 'cause last year I signed up for Medicare. And so that takes some of the burden off the city. Yeah. So, yeah.
Yeah, right.
So that's why it was a nice. What did you say?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have a motion on the floor. Was there a second?
Okay, who, Mike?
Resolution. You've all heard the motion. This will be a roll call vote. Right?
Yes.
Paul Flin?
Yes.
Banker?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion unanimous.
Rumblings and watches are good.
Oh, man, yeah, that's.
Oh, my, that's a fiasco.
That's gonna end up about the time that I can.
That's terrible. Joan, you wanna enlighten us on this next item, resolution eleven twenty-four?
Okay. Last, last month we had one on babies. This month it's on Paul Larson's. Good, Paul Larson's.
Paul Flin?
Yeah, for utilities, utilities. He's behind those utilities. And the water is shut off.
Is he gone? Is he like?
He, I've not, he's not said a word since we shut him off. I think somebody said he's mowing or somebody mowed it once in a while.
Or shut out.
It hasn't moved.
Right next to my huge bag.
Water hasn't moved.
No.
So you just need a motion to, for resolution eleven twenty-four, sir, by nuisance cost on Larson?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Motion's been made by Flint, seconded by Paul Flint. Pass resolution eleven point two four, roll call vote, Flint?
Yes.
Paul Flint?
Yes.
Banker?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion unanimous. unanimous, carry. Okay, Joan, the next item, please.
Okay, Mike has the reinvestment, the investment policy.
What do you think, Mike?
That's thick.
Basically, if you're satisfied with investing all the money in CDs and in the three banks that we have in town, then nothing changes.
That's probably the way it is, but the interest rate isn't very good anyway, so just we'll keep it local.
Okay, so we can just renew it?
I totally concur. The, the banks have been very helpful in some of our projects.
Yes, they have been. You need a motion for that, I'll make a motion that we continue our investment policy as is.
Okay.
And is there a second, please?
I'll say it then.
You've all heard the motion, and by Flint, seconded by Banker. This will be a roll call vote. Flint?
Yes.
Paul Flint?
Yes.
Banker?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion unanimous, carry.
What I just announced on the hall, thank you, Jim.
On the Pioneer Home, the Peterson Pioneer Home, may, may I just say a few words about this?
Oh, we skipped.
Oh, we got interrupted.
Did I skip something? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, we gotta, we gotta go back to that.
Yeah, I don't know how, this came about because someone was looking for some information on past stuff. And the city attorney recommended that we charge them fifty dollars upfront, and we better have that in the form of a reservation.
Oh, that makes sense to me.
To do searches, and if we don't use the money, we can refund it.
Did he say fifty dollars upfront?
He said fifty dollars upfront.
Or so much in a hour.
No, he said fifty dollars upfront.
All right, if that's what he said.
And then, but I think that's a good idea. If it's more.
If it takes you ten.
Yeah, more hours.
Takes you a day at your wage.
Okay, per hour, at.
Yeah, I think.
'Cause I know what he wants is in the basement, so.
All right, so then you charge per hour, per hour, however long it takes you.
Okay, and then if it's more, then he'll owe more.
Yes.
Okay.
But you can go with a minimum of fifty, and anything over that is figured by your hourly rate, which I would propose.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Suppose we need another motion?
Yes.
We need the motion. What I just said. I'll make a motion.
Okay, fifty dollars minimum upfront, and then anything over that is for the hourly wage of the clerk or whoever's looking.
Once you reach that fifty dollar level.
Is there a second? You've all heard the motion. By Flint, seconded by Paul Flint. This will be a roll call vote. Flint?
Yes.
Paul Flint?
Yes.
Banker?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion unanimous, carry. Now, I can get to the Pioneer Home. What the question is, council, are we in accord to move the Peterson Pioneer Home downtown? Now, let me give you some, some information on that. The money, it will not cost the city anything for moving the home down to the site. If we would put it across the street from where, which would be the place to put it along with that schoolhouse. Uh, the Questers have been looking after that home, and they've taken a vote, and they feel that the home should be moved down here where it can be enjoyed by many, many, many people. And there is a person that will raise the funds to see that it's moved.
Is that city property where it sits?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
So then you can sell that property?
Yep. Yep.
Well, would that move pretty easy, I mean.
What we don't know, and, and what has to be done, is the person, this whole thing, that.
Yeah.
Am I right, as a whole thing, Dale?
Moves those. Baiming Hill, whole thing, Dale.
Okay. If the council, if we're all in accord on this would be a good idea to move this, we'll have hopefully look at it and answer that question. Whether it can be moved.
I just wonder what, I mean, it isn't gonna.
That's a good question, Bill. That's a good question.
If it all falls apart.
Well, we don't want that. Then we'd leave it where it is.
Is there enough room over there?
Yeah, carry yourself. Enough room here.
What?
Not real.
Plenty of room.
Plenty of room, yeah. It isn't that big, but it looks rather flimsy where. That's good, I'm pretty done.
It, it does, it gets maybe six people a year the way they do that, if it were down here with that schoolhouse.
People would probably go through it just because it's not the rest of the stuff.
Sure.
That probably makes sense.
I suppose he could beef it up.
It's Dale's problem, beefing with you.
Yeah.
Which isn't true.
But there's, there's a considerable interest, uh, by the person that he said, I'll raise the money to see that it moves.
Well, I guess we've already loved the schoolhouse there, so.
But.
What about then, may I have that foundation down here?
Well, I think he's gonna raise the money.
Yeah, does that funding include that, or?
I think so.
As long as the funding includes all costs, none.
Now, understand this. Whatever you decide tonight is not gonna be final, because they have to first decide whether. But if we're in accord, there might be a good idea to do so. We don't need a motion to do it. I think we just need to. If we generally agree, then it might be a good idea.
I agree. And then we'll.
Then we can have hopefully.
Come to it.
We can have hopefully look at it, make his appraisal, if it's movable. But the Questers just wanted to know if the council was interested in having it down here.
Okay.
Come on, respond to me.
I, for one, really wasn't hip on having the school moved in there myself.
Me either, but there was so much.
But you, I mean, with, with the way that foundation is underneath that ground, you're never, ever gonna get anybody to move in there. You know, nobody's gonna be able to build anything there with, with all that old foundation you get under there. I guess what else you gonna do with it, really?
It's being used, I guess.
Right.
What'll that be? Maintained by.
Well, what I would suggest to the council is.
Let's make an, let's have hopefully make an appraisal to see if it's feasible to move, and then take it from there.
Are they gonna face the alley with it?
You know, I'm a little confused. I seen white lines down there, and it looks like that, that building is Huggin' Hemers Building. Is, am I right about that? Where I seen the white lines, do you know, Joan?
I didn't go down and look.
I, I'll have to look at it again, but it sure looked like it was laying towards that alley, and that could be a little bit of an issue.
You're talking on the Pioneer Home?
Well, then he, he's got a line for both of them, don't he? I think he told me that he had a proposal, I mean, lines for both of them, so I knew where they were.
Okay, 'cause the schoolhouse permit was there. That other map where he had them both laid out is on, I think, if you wanna see that.
What I'm talking about, he, he told me and told me that he had white lines down there. And where them white lines are, if I looked at it right, I just went through there 'cause I had a water.
I would make this point. If, if we get to that step, yes.
They will.
Then we'll decide where it goes.
Okay, okay. I agree with that.
The council will decide where it goes.
I agree with that. 'Cause you're gonna have some issues with snow, if that's back in.
Well, it's your concern. That's good. Well, shall I proceed and have hopefully look at it?
Have sure.
All right, thank you. Delinquent water bills, Joan, where are we at on that?
We'll know more tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll just see you tomorrow, if you'll, if you'll be able to let me know. Okay, committee reports, I'm gonna start with you, Keith.
I'll defer to Mike.
How about me?
Mike?
No, Bill.
Oh.
No, Bill's, Bill's got his report.
Did I catch you out?
Yeah, he's got him out.
But I got, very little.
Please proceed.
Okay. The road people called me three weeks ago, said they were gonna come down and get that contract and kinda get things started, and I still have not heard from him, so I will try to get ahold of him. The only other thing I have is just want everybody to know that we picked up a new truck today, and if you wanna look at it, it's at the fire station.
That's awesome. Oh, it's here?
Yeah.
Nice.
It's awesome.
Nice truck.
Awesome.
Good deal.
Anybody, after we adjourned tonight, maybe we can go up and look at it?
Sure could.
Okay.
We're only charging five bucks.
That's fine, just charge it.
If you're, if you're buying a beer. No, I'm kidding. Okay, anything else, Bill?
Nope, that's pretty well enough.
Now, I'm gonna get to the committee reports, and Keith?
I'll defer to Mike.
Okay, Mike?
I'm gonna go to Todd.
Todd, do you wanna talk about anything?
We had an inspection, and Tyler's pretty well taken care of, all that stuff. We did have some things that they pointed out. Joan, did we ever find the, the papers on the drain thing?
No, I thought, I thought I took them up there and given to them last year.
Documentation on the drain.
I knew you had looked one.
I don't think we had a book, and I think we had a deal that came in like a guarantee thing, and I thought she said it was okay. I see now that it isn't.
Maybe, and he said maybe it was in the records, he just wasn't able to find it.
Sure should have been. Sure should have been.
Okay, well, anyway, that was one of the things I noticed on that report, that, there's something about the showerheads too, so you had to get different showerhead, yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't understand that so much, 'cause I was that way at the beginning of the year. I was gonna put them on. He said he was gonna talk to Hemers and do it, but he apparently decided that they were working good enough. They must have went bad.
Everything.
And the rough edges.
I don't know what, what that is. Is that in the pool again?
Should've talked to him. It says, I will address the officials about the rough edges in the cement and figure out a timeframe with them as to when it can be fixed.
Is it where they poured it?
I would imagine. I would venture to say.
What are you gonna do about that?
Well, yeah, about the only thing you can do is get a grinder in there and grind it out. There's not a whole lot.
Well, I thought that was probably put that way so they didn't slip and slide some of that.
Yeah. But I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm wondering if it's, you know, it says rough edges. I'm just wondering if it's on some edges somewhere, or you know, where the, where it meets, I don't know. But, other than the thing we had tonight, I guess, it's been going pretty decent.
It is.
Yeah, yeah, the pool has been busy. I was up there the other night, and boy, was it nice.
Oh, they've really, yeah. This weather has been a godsend for our kids.
That, that, the pool was eighty-six degrees.
Why was that, right? I want bath water.
No, it was nice. I mean, when you got in, it wasn't a shock. It just, it was just refreshing. It was great.
Well, that's ninety-five about then.
Yeah, eighty-six feels darn good, yeah.
I think we had a hundred today, didn't we? We're going a hundred.
It was hot.
Pretty close.
It was well, I think it was hot.
Anything else, Todd?
Um, I don't believe so.
Okay, Jim? Oh, streets. You have a report on what's going on in the streets?
He just, probably just talked about it.
Yeah, that's what he just said.
He's gotta get ahold of the guy.
I betted.
You gotta get ahold of the guy.
Jeremy.
Jeremy's gonna come pick up that contract, and he hasn't, and I will call him.
Okay, we're gonna go to correspondence. I'd ask some of them, if there's any others. This is a thank you to the city council. Uh, thank you for all the fun, kinda sad retirement party. I was proud and honored by the beautiful play. Thanks to Jim, Ronnie, Land, and of course Joan for all the help in making it go so smoothly and a party that will be remembered. Thanks again, fellas. Is there anything else, Keith?
Yeah, Olympia Curry sent a thank you to our city crew for picking up some branches off our parking during the last storm. And the Rural Legacy Project wishes to thank us for our visible and actual support of the Rural Museum Project. Your donation of the site, votes of confidence have been truly appreciated. And that's from Carol Rash. And John Hoagland, Jones Headquarters donated fifteen dollars in memory of John L. Larson, the swimming pool.
Okay. Now, we're gonna move on to review the office assistance application. And Joan, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to you at this time.
Well, I'd just like to say, this is confidential. I wish the video wasn't running, 'cause some people.
Close session.
We might have to if we don't get cooperation, because this, you know.
The people that you're talking about have to be here to request close session.
Not in this, not, not in this, because some of these people do not want their, you know, their employer to know.
It's understandable, yes.
I'll, I'll send this complaint to the Attorney General. Anyone who votes yes on this but doesn't be subject to.
I just think it's, I mean, we can't, we can't put it out on the media, all these people that have applied. What'd he say?
Is it okay if we take these packets home and review them on our own?
Sure.
And make some decisions, and then?
Okay.
Give our, our decisions to the mayor?
Sure, sure.
And are we going to interview?
Depends on what you come up with.
How many? Do you wanna interview everybody, or do you wanna?
Oh, if you can, fires it to three.
Okay. Three or five?
Okay, I'm here.
Can we do that? Is it done like the plan?
Absolutely.
If you wanna rate them, you know, like your, the top five, first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and give that to the mayor.
Okay.
Joan, I'm gonna ask you something. I don't know if the, and the council's had a chance to review all these. I have. And at this time, Joan, do you have a particular selection that you would like to recommend?
Um, no.
You don't?
A name? No.
Joan, how soon do these papers have to be turned in?
Um, the twenty, just, you need at least ten signatures?
I think it's the twenty-ninth or the twenty. You think it's the twenty-ninth through the twenty?
Yeah, did I write, yeah, somewhere, about twenty.
Twenty-nine through.
Yeah, about a month. Twenty-second is August twenty-ninth to September twenty-second.
So I can hope for it.
Yeah. And do you need more, Todd? Did you say you had other people? Who else? Jim, are you gonna take papers?
Bud.
Are you, are you gonna take out papers?
No.
Oh.
Who's up?
Todd, Butch, and Jim.
Butch?
Yeah. Yeah.
Butch, myself, and Jim.
Yep. And I have more papers if somebody wants to.
You're not doing her again, Jimmy?
No, I'm getting too old. You don't want an eighty-two-year-old on here.
I see you're on the flip side, that you have some people that are willing to watch the office while you're on vacation.
Oh, yeah.
That's okay.
Taking vacation.
That's okay.
You remember Sturgis?
Going, going through it. Yeah, that's.
Going up to Colorado? Where you going?
Uh, Wyoming.
Oh, Wyoming?
Yeah, Jeff and Tammy go to Sturgis, so I babysit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
We go through it every year, on the way.
You got Bill to take you out in the cycle.
No, I've never been on one, I don't ever wanna be. My kids love them, but.
You don't.
One, Joan, and you'll own one.
No, I don't think so.
Coming in on a big old Harley.
I don't think so. Okay, I don't think there's any other.
Um, oh. I think there's something else we need to talk about here, um, moving back a little bit. I think we need to determine tonight with, about the Carl Heimer thing. Um, we need to determine whether or not he's even able to come to meetings, or.
I think, I think the city attorney got to make that.
Yeah, I think he's gotta give us the advice on the, and we need to know ASAP.
Well, cause I'm gonna have to know what it is, like, with this truck, and practicing and learning stuff on it, it's gonna be kinda, I just need to know what direction to go.
It's up to Joe tomorrow and let Bill know.
I mean, if he, if he's, if he's been put on reserve, inactive reserve, does that not allow him to come to meetings?
Well, I don't know why, probably just couldn't.
Well, practices, uh.
I, I really need to get a legal opinion on that, Todd, and I will.
Okay.
And then, uh, we, we'll hold this letter up until I talk to Joe.
Our meeting's Thursday night.
And, and there's, there's practices with these meetings where, you know, you run a truck or do something, and that's what happened before, so we just need to know what, what you want.
I will get that information for you.
Thank you.
Now, back to, an assistant for Joan.
No, they're gonna take him home and review him.
Oh, you're gonna, oh, oh, that'd be a good idea. That'd be a good idea. I'm not gonna take mine home, I, I have, I know who I want.
Okay. And just remember, they are confidential, by the way.
Yes.
How soon, what was the plan?
How long do you think it'll take you to look at them?
How soon do you need to know?
But how soon, yeah, where are you at on, on vacation, and?
Well, I'll be here all this week, but I'll be gone all next week.
Next week.
And Keith said it was okay. Did it, did you hear that, that? I had, I had talked to Eleanor Lindstrom and Nancy Imhoff, and they said they could pick up some hours.
They'll cover.
That's fine.
Okay.
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 And then, um, some of these people need to give their.
Two weeks.
Yeah, two-week notice.
All right.
So. I, I don't know, how, what do you think? How many days is it gonna take you to look at them?
I should probably have pretty good, not real idea by Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay. Yeah, if we, you can have your, your vote back by Wednesday.
Just give it to Ron then, or?
Yeah, give it to Ron, or.
I'll just drop it off to you.
Yeah, that's fine, too.
Just mark on the sheet that you have.
Mayor, are you sure that this vote that you're turning in by Wednesday doesn't constitute a closed, uh, meeting?
Not a louder place.
Just an opinion.
Are you sure that this vote that you're turning in by Wednesday, as it was expressed, isn't a, doesn't constitute closed session meeting?
It is not, it is not a closed session meeting, it's not a vote, it's just our opinion.
It's a, it's a suggestion.
Each individual's opinion, we won't be conferring.
Yeah, it, it, it has, yeah, there is no legal vote, it's a suggestion, the way I, uh, understand it. You'd have to get a lawyer to, uh, you'd have to get a legal opinion to, uh, if you really want an answer to your question. I'm not gonna do that. We're gonna have each councilman make a suggestion, they're gonna hand it to me, and, uh, then I'm gonna go through it. So, that's the way we're gonna do it. Okay, let's move on. What do we have on the flip side, Joan? What do we have uncovered? We didn't, uh, get into any more nuisances, sidewalk letters, uh, Aheart and Clover, uh, building, green buildings, um.
Hey, communication on, uh, oh, the other house down there in the corner.
Oh, Hillman?
Yeah, Hillman.
No, there hasn't been any more.
I thought we already took possession of that.
I don't think.
No, we were going to, provided there was.
Was coming.
No, nothing against it.
Yeah, I think Joe was gonna follow.
Ron, is Hillman's property ours yet?
Say what?
Hillman's.
Hillman's property ours?
Yes.
It is?
Well, it's out of Don Dale, but it's in the process of a quick claim deed, we're accepting a quick claim deed, okay? And Joe's taking care of it, it's, it's in the process.
Okay.
Uh, when it's done, uh, do you wanna offer to any of the neighbors for a reasonable fee? Anybody have a?
We don't need another one.
We don't need another one.
No. Uh. Well, is that, is that right next to Gary?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Gary, what?
What do we have invested in?
Nothing.
Nothing.
What will that be?
Oh, I don't know what it'll cost to take it down.
Well, maybe we would get rid of it before we took it down.
Well, that's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to do, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Like, leave it, bugger something.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, you know, you and, uh, I'm gonna switch to that Rector House, and you're gonna check on it.
Yep.
Have you talked to Chewie at all in the destruction of that house?
Tell me a lot more, cause you gotta do things differently.
Okay, okay. Okay.
You mean legally?
Well, the, the Hillman House has been standing there for a long time, and we don't have to take any action on that, but maybe one of the neighbors might want.
We're hoping.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Aheart and Clover buildings, we can proceed, uh, whenever you'd like to, on, um, uh, either they, uh, give them an order, either they fix it, the properties, the buildings, or we'll condemn it. That's the choice they have. We can proceed on that whenever the council decides to do that.
Now, it makes sense waiting, doesn't it?